We have Mr. Rivera and Ms. Kennedy online.
Ms. Kennedy, are you on the phone?
I am. Can you hear me okay?
Loud and clear. That is great. Mr. Rivera?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you.
And the recording is on. I now call to order this special meeting of the Anchorage Assembly. It is Friday, December 10, 2021. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Madam Clerk. Mr. Weddington?
Here.
Ms. Allard?
Here.
Mr. Peterson?
Present.
Mr. Rivera?
Present.
Ms. Kennedy?
Here.
Ms. LeBrans?
Here.
Mr. Coniston?
Here.
Ms. Zalatell?
Here.
Mr. Dunbar?
Here.
Mr. Perez-Bradyum?
Here.
Ms. Quinn-Davidson?
Yes.
Second floor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ms. Quinn-Davidson, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Bowman, would you read the land acknowledgement, please?
The land acknowledgement is a formal statement recognizing the indigenous people of the place. It is a public gesture of appreciation for the past, present, indigenous stewardship of the lands that we now occupy. It is an actionable statement that marks our collective movement towards decolonization and equity. The Anchorage Assembly would like to acknowledge that we gather today on the traditional lands of the Dinina Apabaskins. For thousands of years, the Dinina have been and continue to be the stewards of this land. It is with gratefulness and respect that we recognize the contributions, innovations, and contemporary perspectives of the Upper Cook Inlet Dinina.
And actually, if we could have members of the administration and the Assembly who are present identify themselves.
I'm Bill Falsy, appearing at the request of Assembly Council.
Patrick Burke, Department of Law.
Ben Bowman, Department of Law.
The head of the Department of Law. And then the...
Barbara Jones, Municipal Clerk.
Bryce Willbanks, Mayor's Office.
Amy Dubaski, Municipal Manager, Overhead Old Deputy Municipal Manager.
Nikita Jibokhov, Chief Financial Officer.
Travis Perez, chaired by a fiscal officer.
Thank you. We have three items of business on a special meeting agenda pertaining to the mayoral vetoes of the budget. The first item for a assembly action on mayoral veto of AO 2021-96, as amended, an ordinance of the municipality of Anchorage adopting and appropriating funds for the 2022 general government operating budget for the municipality of Anchorage from the regular assembly meeting of November 23, 2021. Ms. Quinn-Davidson?
Thank you. I'll move to override strike line one, amendment number one, and...
Second.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, since so much of this revolves around the existence or nonexistence of the projected revenue, I'd like to have Mr. Falsy give a presentation about that and about the voting certification issue.
Thank you, Ms. Quinn-Davidson. Mr. Falsy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If someone wouldn't mind grabbing the lights in the back, we did present a few slides that I think may be helpful to the Assembly's consideration. I don't know if it would debate in total darkness. I can keep the backlights on if you'd like. I think everybody can see that. I'm Bill Falsy. I am outside counsel for the Assembly. Assembly Council is not available today. But he asked me to come speak in this special meeting regarding the assembly action on the mayoral veto. As you know, we are brought here because on November 23, the Assembly unanimously adopted the various ordinances which together comprise the municipal budget. And so you are also aware, on November 30, the mayor vetoed that. The mayor's veto message highlights a central concern. The vetoes are in good measure because the administration cannot validate or certify the funding source increases that the Assembly provided for the vetoed items, amendments one and amendment 11. Amendment 11 was a very small amendment. Amendment one was the omnibus amendment that made most of the changes to the general operating budget. So let's remind ourselves just briefly what those were. Amendment one in the main restored most of the cuts to the continuation level funding of the budget that we carried for 2021, and it outlined the sources of revenues necessary to pay for all those restorations. Of those sources, the one that seems to be getting the most particular attention and interest is the $2.5 million of increased 2022 projected room tax. Amendment one laid out the Assembly's rationale for increasing that revenue source and noted that the previous administration, when building the budget for 2021, estimated that after getting walloped by COVID, we would have a 50% recovery in the bed taxes off of the 2019 levels. But low and behold, this year, we are not on track for a 50% recovery, but a 100% recovery and the projected year-end receipts of $27.5 million. And in fact, as of September 21, it had been reported to the Assembly, we already had $23.4 million of bed taxes in the bank. But the Assembly amendment noted, the proposed budget projected that we would receive $24 million in bed tax revenue for the whole of fiscal year 2022. The amendment's authors proposed that is unreasonable, and it does not make sense to project that next year's bed taxes would be $3.5 million less than this year's bed tax revenues, and that rather a more reasonable objection would be to say we are going to return 2022 to 2022. All of that tees up a central question. If there is a dispute about anticipated revenues for the budget, who decides? And as a legal matter, we turn to our constitutional document, our municipal charter. Charter says, "The Assembly decides." So let's step into that. There are central provisions related to the municipal budget. In Article 13 of the charter, which is entitled Finance, it begins with the mayor. Section 3, 1303, provides operating and capital budget. At least 90 days before the end of the year, the mayor shall submit to the Assembly a proposed operating and capital budget, and it is supposed to come with an analysis of the fiscal implications. What happens after the mayor submits that? The charter tells us in 1305, "Assembly action on the municipal budget." Here is what the Assembly's prerogative is. The Assembly may increase or decrease any item and may add or delete any item in the proposed operating or capital budget of the municipality. Period. Full stop. You can read the rest of that section and find that it is all about what happens if the Assembly doesn't adopt a budget in time. But plenary authority is vested in the Assembly in adopting the budget. Some have said that is the central thing that the Assembly does. Well, what happens if there is a dispute about the budget? Well, the mayor, after the adoption of the Assembly's budget, has two recourse. And the first one, we are very familiar with. Section 502, powers of the mayor, says the mayor can veto the whole thing. The mayor also has line item veto power, and with particularity, that means the mayor can strike or reduce items in a budget or appropriations measure. But of course, the Assembly has a recourse. The Assembly, by two-thirds majority vote of the total membership, can override that veto. What happens if there's still a dispute after the override of veto? Charter provides an answer to that, too, and this is of central importance to perhaps today's conversation. Section 1306, Reduction and Transfer of Appropriations, says, "If the mayor determines that revenues are less than the total amount that the Assembly appropriated," what's the mayor supposed to do? Tell the Assembly. Make a report to the Assembly. And then what is the Assembly's obligation? The charter says, "You may reduce appropriations as you deem necessary." You may reduce appropriations as you deem necessary. The charter makes very clear that you are in charge of the appropriations process. You get to decide what the municipal budget is. So having worked our way through the charter, that tees up two more questions. How does the code implement the charter? And how does that actually all work out in practice? Here, there are two provisions of the code that I think are of current relevance. The first is 61030, Preparation of the Budget, which is an ancient provision of code, which in the historical note was all the way back to the greater Anchorage area borough. So it was adopted sometime before, 1975. And it's a long one, but we'll step through it together. Here we provide, how does the budget come to the Assembly? Bill, it says, Office of Management and Budget is supposed to internally present something to the mayor. It's supposed to conclude appropriations, expenditures, estimated taxes, and other revenues. And prior to the mayor's administrative review, the chief fiscal officer is supposed to provide a funding certification. Then, upon Assembly adoption of the budget, the chief fiscal officer's role changes. Now the chief fiscal officer is responsible for execution and administration of the budget and pre- and post-budget audits. And were there any... To the extent there was a question about how that role changed prior to administrative review and after Assembly adoption, when this provision was picked up from the greater Anchorage area borough and brought into the municipality in 1976, very helpfully included a graphic. So in AO 21, 1976, we're following the wheel. The budget is being prepared. The chief fiscal officer is making a certification for the mayor. The budget is then adopted by the Assembly. And finally, the chief fiscal officer is supposed to carry out the scheduled budget. And that makes sense because this is an Assembly-adopted code provision, which can be interpreted as giving you confidence that what the mayor has proposed to you, the chief fiscal officer agrees, will actually work. And there's a second provision of code that I said I'd mention, and that is the more general, not related to the budget, 63050, Certification of Funds. It is another ancient provision of code that we should also step through. So we're going to do this slowly. First one is, "No contract, agreement, or other obligation involving the expenditure of money." That's a key phrase, "the expenditure of money." "And no ordinance, resolution, or order for the expenditure of money shall be entered into or passed by the Assembly unless the chief fiscal officer first certifies that the money required for the contract obligation or expenditure has been appropriated." That's what the certification is. The Assembly made an appropriation. And what money is the CFO supposed to be looking at? That's provided in the second paragraph. It's money actually in the treasury to the credit of the fund which was appropriated to, meaning still there and hasn't already been spent on some other purpose, and money that's anticipated to come into the treasury before the contract, agreement, or obligation is actually due. And both of those are considered money in the treasury and subject to the certification by the CFO. Well, who gets to do the anticipated? Who gets to make the appropriation? We know the answer to that from the charter. The Assembly is the one who gets to decide whether or not an appropriation is made, whether or not an appropriation needs to be reduced on a revenue projection. You can decide, as you deem necessary, what to do with the appropriations and what revenues to project. And that makes sense. The code doesn't require the CFO to certify the adopted budget, which makes appropriations, has made appropriations. That's almost a tautological, nonsensical exercise. And remind ourselves of what the budget is. This is the ordinance that was just adopted, or this is maybe the proposed version for the amendment. The general operating budget. Section two is, "The direct costs are hereby appropriated." So there's really nothing to certify, and in practice, that accords with the long history of the municipality. All right, so here, this is about whether you have actually appropriated it. If you look at the memorandum that comes with the budget, you'll see that it ends with this usual final concurrence block. "Administration recommends approval." This is in stark contrast to items that involve the expenditure of money, like one that I picked at random, after an appropriation has been made, after the solid-based services budget has been adopted. Now Solid-based Services wants to literally give $86,000 to a third-party vendor. At that point, the memorandum has to come with a fund certification that is called a fund certification and that lists the accounting string that shows which fund was populated by the appropriation. That is notably absent in the Assembly budget. And so far as I'm aware, there has never been a fund certification on any adopted Assembly budget. So to sum it all up then, the charter tells us, you have plenary authority over the budget. If there is a disagreement about projected revenues, you still have the prerogative to make the choice. If the mayor disagrees, there is a veto obligation or option available to the mayor, but you get to override them. So my legal advice to you is that is within your authority to override vetoes today if you believe the revenue projections are credible and are in the best interest of this town.
Thank you, Mr. Falsy. Do you members have any questions? Mr. Weddington?
It's not exactly on the train of your discussion on fund certification, but up there you showed, you know, once a budget's there, the mayor can decide whether or not to extend any particular budget item. Is that correct?
Chair to Assembly Member Weddington? To a certain extent, for certain. So the budget, for instance, appropriates to the fire department labor dollars and non-labor dollars. It's not obliging non-labor expenditures in any particular form. The mayor and the chief of the fire department decided this year it's hoses and next year it's uniforms. That is within their discretion.
If we fund a budget, payroll budget, a certain size, they don't have to spend all of it, though. Could they just say, "Okay, we're not going to hire 20 fire fighters?" It's not a five, not spending.
To the Chair and Assembly Member Weddington. In practice, that is true to an extent. If it were taken to an extreme, that does wander into an area of law known as executive impoundment. And that has this amazing history going all the way back to Thomas Jefferson and the purchase of various frigates. But so if the executive were to say, "The Assembly just said, 'I'm creating a new department,' or 'I wish to buy the SOCA IN,' and I'm appropriating dollars to buy the SOCA IN,'" and the administration just said, "I'm not feeling that." That is probably unlawful, but certainly there'd be a lot of fights about it. To the extent that you have appropriated $100 million of labor budgets between the two public safety departments, and they end up spending 99, I don't think there's any problem there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weddington. Thank you, Mr. Falsy. Mr. Dunbar, and then Mr. Constance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the motion on the floor now is to override amendment one with striking of line one. And I guess I just want to confirm with you, Madam Chair, and with anyone else who has a question about it, that we actually do have to go line by line? That we can't just override an entire... We can't just override an entire veto A, B, C. We actually do have to go through each strike? That's my understanding, and I was hoping to get some clarity on that.
Thank you, Mr. Dunbar. Mr. Falsy, would you want to address this question?
Yeah, to the Chair and Assembly Member Dunbar, I think you can make a motion to override multiple line item strikes at once.
My recommendation is that we not do that. That we do actually go through each. I think there are a couple in here that I, for one, would be willing to let stand. But that's just one person's opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Dunbar. Mr. Constance, and then Ms. Zalatell?
Thank you. So I'm not prepared to leave the previous conversation yet. And I have a question along the lines of your well-illustrated tautological phenomenon of presuming that the CFO has the authority to deny certification of funds or require certification of funds for the Assembly to pass a budget or pass an override. I think you kind of answered this with the frigate question, but I have to ask it in an absurdist way. Should the mayor decide and the CFO demand or say, "I will only certify $1 budget," is it within the power of the executive to eliminate all expenditures of the municipality?
So to the Chair and Assembly Member Constance, my answer is clearly no. And I think if you were to construe the charter in such a way that to acquire the CFO to confer and certify the budget, which again doesn't make a sort of intuitive sense, it would be an odd result inasmuch as one unelected municipal officer would have a veto authority over the Assembly budget that couldn't be overridden by anyone. And I don't see that provision in the charter. If it is there, it would be helpful for someone to identify.
And a quick follow-on to that. We have heard much sturm and drum about how there are separation of powers issues in this municipality. Who supervises the CFO? And if the CFO asserts that he has such control to override the Assembly's power to veto, then who actually has the power over the veto?
Well, I'm not sure I... To the Chair and Assembly Member Constance, I'm not sure I follow you all the way into that hypothetical, but I will back out and say simply, my take and read of the charter is that when the mayor issues a veto, the Assembly can override it by two-thirds, and that you have the authority to adopt it.
Okay, so I'm just going to express it then. The person who the CFO serves at the pleasure of is the mayor. If the CFO is not willing to do his duty and instead is willing to do the political will of the mayor, then does that not in fact put the mayor in charge of the budget?
To the Chair and Assembly Member Constance, maybe as a practical matter, I suppose if you had a completely rogue CFO who was acting contrary to the mayor's wishes, the mayor could fire them or replace them with someone new, so the mayor would still have authority. But at the end of the day, yes, the CFO serves the pleasure of the mayor, so the mayor ultimately does have some check on what the CFO's actions are. Mayor's authority to veto the budget is described in the charter. It does not involve declarations from the CFO himself. Thank you.
And Ms. Ennis?
Yeah, I think the Department of Law should weigh in at some point here. This memo that the Department of Law put together was started in a joint effort to address these issues. It was not driven by the mayor, it was not requested by a mayor, it was not requested by any person in the Assembly. I mean, administration, excuse me. Unfortunately, Dean was not here today for us to try to finish it up together. But at the beginning, there was a definite understanding that, yes, the CFO has some type of role. It is not the role to certify the budget. It's the role to certify funds within the budget, and that's a real certification. This came up because the Assembly found fund sources in both the fund balance, alcohol tax, amounts that have not yet been determined. That's how that came up. So this was not CFO... And by the way, the CFO didn't request this memo either. In fact, he got to read it at the same time you did. That so it's certification of funds within the budget. And to say that the Assembly just has complete power over that, that the CFO's role should be negated, it's sort of, to me, is ludicrous. It's budget depends on funds, monies in funds. And that is the role of the CFO in the finance department. It's not the role of the Assembly. So I stand by that memo that we did. It started out as a try to help both the administration and the Assembly understand this. And, you know, the Assembly can say, "Hey, you know, Bill said what we can appropriate." And then at the end of the day, the Department of Law is going to say, "If you're relying on uncertified funds, then that budget is going to be of no effect." And that affects primarily '96, '97, there's not that issue. '98, finance was supposed to look to tell us whether there are issues of fund certification. So when I say that '96 is operating budget, there are definitely fund cert issues in that budget. '97, we think not, there aren't fund cert issues. So your normal override process is in effect. '98, finance is supposed to tell us whether there are any fund cert issues. We, the Department of Law, are only addressing the fund cert issue. The override process is the override process. But the Department of Law is an independent group in this particular matter. Try to come to a position that we think that your, the '96, the operating budget, will be without effect if you rely on uncertified funds. And that is not the discretion of the Assembly, it's the finance department.
Thank you, Ms. Ennis. So next I have Ms. Zalatell, and then Mr. Dunbar.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So two things. One, if everyone could speak up a little bit louder, I'm having a hard time hearing you. Second, question to Ms. Ennis. So how do we reconcile that conclusion with the fact that an appropriation has not yet been made? This is my understanding. Until the budget is passed and appropriation has not been made, if I understand correctly, there's an appropriation, and then when those appropriations are ready to be effectuated, that is when the fund certification happens. So why is this situation different than past budgets? Because there hasn't been a fund certification, my understanding, in past budgets.
Any other response? Please, go ahead.
So...
Mr. Bowman? I'm sorry.
Through the chair. So the budget is to be based upon financial information provided by the CFO. The equivalent of a fund certification comes from the CFO before the budget goes to the mayor, before it goes to the Assembly. So the issue we are encountering here is that there have been funding sources that the CFO, the finance department through the CFO, cannot verify exist. They were never in the present... The total amount of money the municipality has to spend, which was provided to the mayor, upon which the proposed expenditures were developed and then passed to the Assembly to make the plenary decisions of appropriations of that money the municipality has to expend. The fund certification is... Also takes place on the back end that we've not already appropriated that money to another purpose. But as Mr. Falsy implied, there are obligations which can be incurred through the budget process which are nondiscretionary to the mayor, nondiscretionary once the budget has been passed. So it can obligate the municipality to pay monies just through the passage of the budget. And as was pointed out in 630050, any obligation of monies by municipality requires fund certification by the CFO. And logically, that makes sense because the CFO is the individual who is tasked by charter and code to know what money the municipality has.
Again, it didn't answer my question. Why is this particular situation suddenly requiring a fund certification from the CFO in 2022's budget when it hasn't come up prior? That's what I am not catching. Like, why is this being put forward as an issue? Is it simply because there are different revenue projections? Is it as simple as that? Or is there something else?
Well, it is along the line of revenue and fund certification because, you know, the budget is based on not only the revenues which would be coming in, but also the amounts which exist within the fund balance. That is the total pool of money that is to be spent. And it has somewhat come up before. In the budget for first quarter 2021, there was an amendment offered to fire department budget increasing funding for the mobile crisis team. And that amendment was based upon a funding source which eventually was determined to not exist, to not be certified by the CFO. And that portion of the budget was not effective. And I believe that was in the memo that you submitted to the Assembly. Don't have a copy of that. I'd be happy to make sure that...
Well, and I'll just say that memo was submitted like 30 minutes before we've undertaken this exercise. I think there's a difference. I'm just going to give you my viewpoint really quick because we're going to be debating as a two-fold. If fund certification was so critical to the operating budgets and our passage of the budgets, this wouldn't be news to me today. So that's number one. Number two, I think what happens at first quarter is a little bit different. And when we're actually selecting appropriations into particular things instead of the global appropriations to make those funds available for subsequent appropriations where I do know we need fund certification. And finally, just because Mr. Dunbar raised it earlier, I would actually prefer to take the amendments up for wholesale because I believe this is a package. And that's how we address them on the floor, and I think they all work together. So that is it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zalatell. Before I go to Mr. Dunbar, I'm going to go to Ms. Allard, as she's not been in the queue yet. Ms. Allard?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions for legal then. So if the body, the Assembly body overrides the mayor's budget, then are we, our operating budget, does that mean that our budget then would not be legal?
So as Deputy Attorney Ms. Ennis pointed out, there are three vetoes, one of which is based upon... One of which is based upon changes to the budget, which did have fund certification problems. One of which almost certainly does not have fund certification problems. And one of which, we're still waiting to hear about from the finance department, whether there are fund certification issues or not. So 2020-96... So twenty twenty ninety-six does have fund certification issues. So the operating budget, if the veto is overridden, would result in a budget that lacks the force of law. Twenty twenty-one ninety-seven, if overridden, could be effective. It does not have any issues with the existence of funds or not. Twenty twenty-one ninety-eight, if overridden, we're still waiting to hear back from the Finance Department whether there are fund certification issues in that one or not. If there are fund certification issues, there are not the funds which that, those amendments that were covered under that veto intend to spend, intend to allocate towards particular causes. If it is trying to spend money that we don't necessarily know we have, then yes, it would cause again another ineffective budget without the force of law. If there are not fund certification issues, overriding the twenty twenty-one ninety-eight veto would result in an effective budget.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Allard. I'll go to Mr. Perez Rudia next, then Mr. Dunbar, then Mr. Con. Mr. Perez Rudia?
So I think I have three things. One, I just, I want to try to get clear on this, as others are trying to get clear on this. So the way I'm hearing it is that, is that a pool of money is certified prior to the budget being approved. And if the amendments or the changes that we make to the budget exceed that established pool of money, then the budget could be deemed illegal. Is that what you're saying?
We've been avoiding the word illegal. We've been using not have the force of, the force and effect of law. But yes.
So what I hear you saying is, is that the Administration, and any Administration, they get to decide what the pool of money is. They get to decide. And that's, I think, where we're looking for, that if they decide we have a dollar, then that negates the Assembly's ability to pass a budget. Because anything we pass over a dollar is not legal. It seems ludicrous to me. So that's the first part that I don't understand. The second is, I really want to hear our legal representative to address this because I think he's presented his, and then you presented yours, and I'd love to hear sort of a reaction to that. But before that, I just want to put on the record that I'm also in favor of passing it wholesale because that's how we, or vetoing it wholesale because that's how it was brought up before. But I would like to get a space for Mr. Falsy to react to that particular part of it that I tried to explain because it seems different from what we heard in the Assembly. Mr. Falsy?
Through the chair to Assembly Member Perez Rudia. I agree with your take. I disagree with the analysis that you're hearing from the Department of Law. I'll say just briefly, if this take that is being presented by the Department of Law is correct, where are the fund certifications from prior Assembly-approved budgets? I don't think they exist. And from where does the obligation to certify the potential pool of money derive? If it is this code provision, I think as I presented, the code provision is about certifying the appropriation, which just doesn't make sense in this context. But further, I would say, I think then, then maybe the source of the dispute is a code provision, not the Charter provision. So it is also within the Assembly's control at some point. So that may be worth clarifying between the two positions here. Is this just a question about a single provision of code in Title Six? And if so, maybe that motivates a clarifying amendment somewhere down the road.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Perez Rudia. Thank you, Mr. Falsy. Mr. Dunbar?
Thank you. And I'll say that, you know, I think the Administration made their position pretty clear in their veto statement. I think it was legal statement, and we have an attorney who has laid out, I think, a very clear argument based on Charter and Code, why the idea of, for example, Mr. Bowman said, quote, "Money we don't have." But budgets are a projection of revenue. But in twenty twenty-two, we don't have any of the money that we are going to collect in twenty twenty-two for property taxes. We don't have any of that yet. We don't have any of the bed tax, we don't have any of the alcohol tax, none of that. We don't have any of that money. It's all a projection of money. And so I think what we have right now are two different, colorable, reasonable, although I don't think it's very reasonable, let's say we don't get twenty-four million dollars, bed tax, projections of revenue. And two colorable, maybe one, I think, more reasonable, legal interpretations. And they both exist. I am much more persuaded by the one that our counsel has provided. And my recommendation today, you know, we don't get the chance that the mayor does to go in and light out events. Our choice today is up or down, yes or no, on these vetoes. The idea that after the budget passes, a budget that is authorized and mandated by Charter, that it would somehow become invalidated, I just fundamentally disagree with. That's a legal question. Today, I recommend that we override these vetoes, almost all of them. There's a couple that I'm open to. And then we move forward. Mr. Dunbar?
Thank you, Mr. Dunbar. Mr. Burke, were you wanting, Mr. Burke?
Yes. Through the chair to address a point that was brought up, specifically, Mr. Perez, it is a logical extension of the Administration saying that there are zero dollars' worth of certified funds and certified revenues, and therefore, no ability to pass the budget. That is the logical extension of this, that could be the logical extension of this stance. The opposite logical extension is that the Assembly passes a budget far in excess of certified funds. Say, the CFO certifies that there is fifty million dollars' worth of either fund balance or incoming revenue, and the Assembly passes a two billion dollar budget. The question would be whether Charter and Code strike more on the line of fiscal conservancy whereby we know that at the very least, the municipality will have funds. If the Assembly, if the municipality says there is zero dollars coming in, and they're off by twenty million dollars, we have twenty million dollars. And, or the opposite, which is fiscal.
Non.
Yeah, non-conservatism, excess. Whereby if we expect we're getting fifty million dollars and we only get thirty, we're now twenty million dollars in the hole, and the municipality is bankrupt.
And I'm sorry, can I just make one little small point in response to that, please?
Go ahead, Mr. Perez Rudia.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with both sides of that. The question though comes back to who gets to decide. Right? And that's, I think, the, at the end of the day, is that, is that, you're right, extremes can happen on both sides. But it appears to me, based on what I've seen, that the authority to pass and approve the budget is in our area. And that it can be informed by the Administration. But it is our authority to make that decision. And if it's a bad decision, then we get to sort of experience the repercussions of that. Or we can amend that or change that. But it's within our authority to make that decision. And so it feels very much like there is an attempt at trying to sort of take away our ability to make the decision that it clearly is ours to make, so.
Thank you, Mr. Perez Rudia. And then Mr. Constant, and then Mr. Weddleton.
So an assertion was made by the Legal Department that the CFO presents the budget to the mayor. That's factually inaccurate. First, a hundred and twenty-day letter is presented by the mayor to the chief fiscal officer and the executive. And it's very interesting how the fund certification, whatever you want to call this, this little act that occurred behind the scenes, but not in the documents we have, started with the mayor. And it was filtered through the CFO's office, not from the CFO to the mayor. So there's no argument that could be made that this was the CFO's action. Second, it was stated by our friend, the Deputy Municipal Attorney, that there might be expenses that are unanticipated that have to be addressed by the executive from the budget process, and therefore, we can't take a stand at this time. Where do these mysterious obligations come from? And how do we account for them in our process of projecting a budget? Because we are the ones who pass the budget. There was a proposal suggested by the Legal Department that this budget would not in fact be in accordance with the law, it would be invalidated. Then I just heard today, for the very first time, that in this year's budget, the mobile crisis team, a determination was made by the executive that no funds were available, so no certification could happen, and therefore, those expenditures weren't allowed. First I heard of it today. So the presumption would have to be made that then our entire budget for the year of twenty-one is invalidated, if your argument were to be accepted as fact. So I don't think that we can accept your argument as fact, based on the simple presentation that you made that the Administration, whether it was the previous or the current, decided not to spend money or is uncertified, or state there is no certification for those dollars. Because if your argument is, we pass this budget, if it's not certifiable, it's an illegitimate budget, then this budget is illegitimate. So we can't be existing in that arena because here we are, the building, the lights are on, people are here, checks are being made. So I'm surprised that politics just crept into this in a very direct way. Conservative versus excessive. That was the framing that was put on this conversation.
Madam Chair, can I do a point of order? I mean, he's clearly speaking to motive. He can't read people.
I did not, excuse me.
Hold on, folks. You can always call a point of order.
Thank you, Madam Chair, point of order.
And your point of order is you believe that Mr. Constant is speaking to motive? I, it is a ruling of the chair that he is not. He is responding to what has been stated by the Department of Law, providing an alternative interpretation.
I literally used the words that were stated here. A one-dollar budget would be the conservative budget, and a two billion dollar would be a budget in excess. And that that is a political framing. I said that. And that is based on what we heard here. This was not an attack at your motive. I actually respect you all deeply. I don't agree with you in this case. So what's the check on a budget that's in excess? First quarter budget revisions. That's the time we true the budget, and that's the time we've always trued the budget. And so if we have a budget that's a dollar in excess of our revenues, a million dollars in excess of our revenues, any number in excess of our revenues, we have the responsibility to balance that budget at first quarter budget revision so that we make it to the end of the year with a balanced budget, not some mystical time before the budget process begins. I feel very strongly about this, as people could probably tell. I think that there's a steamroll effect attempting to be made here, and I do not buy it for a minute. I think that I propose we take them all up wholesale minus any specific items as opposed to walking through these each one at a time. And I'm interested to note, because we did already speak briefly about ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, that nowhere in ninety-eight was it stated that there was a fiscal issue. The budget veto that was proposed more than seven days ago was based on philosophical approaches. So that argument is after the fact at this time. So we'll take that one up when we get there. The authority to pass this budget, to override these vetoes, is strongly within the hands of the legislative branch of government, not the Administration.
Thank you, Mr. Constant. And before we move through the queue, could I get a motion to extend?
Move to extend to five thirty.
Second. We've seconded. Is there any opposition to extending until five thirty? Seeing and hearing no opposition, we are extended until five thirty. Next in the queue is Mr. Weddleton, and then Ms. Allard, and then Ms. Quinn-Davidson. Mr. Weddleton? And, I'm sorry, actually, we pause. We'll go to Mr. Peterson, he hasn't spoken yet.
Oh, wow. Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, you know, this is the eighth budget that I've been involved with in my time on the Assembly. And this is the first time that we've got into this disagreement about fund certifications. As a matter of fact, this has not come prior during our budget discussions in previous years. And every year, when the budget is put together, they're projecting anticipated revenues that are coming in from, in the next year. And every year, it's the same situation. You never know whether your projections are going to be right on, whether they're going to be short, whether you're going to have a big influx of money, funds coming in that you didn't anticipate. You know, we're throwing darts every year. Some years you're more accurate than you are in other years. And so I just think that, and it was mentioned just previously by a previous speaker, that politics has seemed to have jumped in to this when we typically try to keep politics out of the budget if we can because we're trying to fund the city, fix potholes, make, keep the buses running, and keep the lights on, those type of practical, practical things. And so I just, I just find it difficult to believe that, out of all the previous budgets, that this fund certification situation didn't come up prior.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Mr. Weddleton?
Well, thanks. The fund certification surprised me. And I, you know, I think what I look at is, do we have reasonable assumptions on how much money would be there, which kind of ties, what is fund certification? Is there reasonable funds? And I found that the argument that Mr. Dunbar and Austin had made on, you know, the various amendments were credible. I mean, in some, I mean, to think that we, we don't know, but that, you know, our alcohol tax and bed tax would be more than shown in this, I think was very credible. But on the other side too, we kind of went in this knowing that we were approving a million-dollar increase in the fire department's budget through the new CBA. It's not reflected in here. So I don't know what is conservative, what's a non-conservative estimate. It's all kind of vague there. I mean, we do work on first quarter budget revisions, tidying it up. But I think that's too late for this, in particular because we're talking about a billion-dollar change for the fire department. And we can see what we're doing just to save hundred fifty thousand dollars, closing equipment here and there. What about a million? That is a really big deal. I think we have AMEA coming up. Would it be the date on that roughly?
I think it is, but it is coming up.
But is it January, February?
I think so.
Okay, so fairly soon. So we're talking serious, significant change in the budget. And that's where we live. We live in this very vague area. So can you fund cert any of it? Well, we know we got that billion dollars totally unaccounted for here. Probably not. And AMEA is not signed and sealed yet, but you know it's coming. So, you know, I find their estimates credible. Credible enough to, there's a few in here, and I hope we go one by one because I think some in here where we could, probably not override. And, but I think very soon, before Q one, we need to look at the budget again and say, and maybe this month, early January, and look at it with the new information, the million dollars to the fire department, and get a budget that is much closer to reality. You know, in previous years, we were pretty close, and it was around the edges in April. This year, I'm not seeing that. We have some big discrepancies, you know, primarily with the CBA, but not so much this. Thanks.
Mr. Bowman?
Through the chair to address the point raised by Assemblymember Swinton. Credibility of financial projection is part of the basis of our memo, that the CFO is appointed by the mayor, approved by the Assembly, and is set out in Charter and Code as the chief financial, chief fiscal officer of the municipality. They are the individual we turn to regarding our fiscal, financial policy and our fiscal and financial status. That is basis of, part of the basis of our analysis is that where it is clear that appropriation is one hundred percent within the purview of the Assembly, appropriate amounts as desired, the determination of the fiscal, financial status of the municipality, per, indications throughout Charter and Code, seems to be with the chief financial officer, fiscal officer. They have the information to know, have the best idea and ability to project what is coming down the pipe. What will be the bed tax in coming years, based on prior years and based on outside consultants with the chief fiscal officers required to bring in to advise them.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Mr. Weddleton, did you have any follow-up?
No, thank you.
Next is Ms. Allard, then Ms. Quinn-Davidson, and then Mr. Constant.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So for me, being fiscally conservative has nothing to do with politics. Has to do with common sense. Has to do with common sense and protecting our taxpayers. And so, from your standpoint where you guys came up with your analysis and your legal opinion, I've kind of, being on the Assembly for the last 18 months, nothing surprises me on how late notice we get. So, kind of been accused that you were holding on to this. When did you guys come up with your legal opinion and how long have you been working on it?
Thanks, Ben.
Absolutely.
Go ahead, Ms. Ennis.
We met with Dean Blair, the internal group, last Friday to try to get something because we were concerned whether the Assembly would try to do override by Tuesday night. So, we asked the chair, can you please give us this week, because today is your deadline, to come up with a memo?
So, you've been working on it and you probably want to have your opinion now, like?
Well, we were hoping to get Dean back into the tail end.
Okay.
He wasn't in today, so, and we were coming to that conclusion. We also met with OMB three or four times. Marilyn Bansaw. We reviewed a lot of materials. For instance, Dan Moore, I mean, such is the CFO, remember Dan Moore's memo which said, hey, yeah, I think there is more alcohol tax money and I think we, the administration accommodated that in the amendments. But don't do that with the roof tax. And so, again, the people that the Assembly really trust, who have always done very good forecasting, they're backing up this whole issue, so we looked through that.
Madam Chair, can I just?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, we've been going back of why we're certified now all of a sudden. And you brought up, you, legal department, brought up the fact that, was it, you said first quarter, that it should have been certified and it wasn't?
Last year.
And if not, why wasn't it? Because it was a different administration. So, can you help me understand that a little bit?
So, through the chair to Assemblyperson Allard. Reviewing quarter one, I want to give you the precise site. It appears in Assembly memorandum 194-2021A. There's in support of Assembly ordinance 2021-94S. The amendment was passed on the floor increasing funding for the Mobile Crisis Team based upon, based upon a reallocation of unprogrammed or unspent funds and then upon review by finance department. They determined that there were no such unallocated or unspent funds. And the way that played out this year was that budgetary amendment which just never took effect. Now, there was a question as to whether that was appropriate or not, raised by Assemblyperson Constance, whether that process was. And I would put to the Assembly that that might not have been appropriate because the will of the Assembly, the budget which was passed by the Assembly was just ignored in regards to that line. It never happened because there was no funds certified to pay for that budgeted expense. And it could be, we are proposing a process through which the Assembly's will is not ignored, through which the budgetary process is clear, is public and is not relegated to a footnote that came in after the fact when it was determined that funds were not appropriate. And we're just going to ignore this portion of the amendment that occurred.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Allard. Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Ms. Quinn-Davidson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To speak to, I guess, other folks had expressed that they'd like to take up these wholesale. I think there are a couple that Mr. Dunbar mentioned, or as Mr. Dunbar mentioned, that I would accept from that. So, I'll probably make that motion once we get to the time, see if folks are happy with it. If not, we can adjust from there. But I guess I just wanted to say, what you are proposing gives more power to the CFO than anyone else elected by constituents. That is absurd. And the CFO is hired and fired by the mayor. So, you are saying that the mayor gets to put any CFO he wants, who can undermine everything the Assembly does, when we are elected by our constituents. That is absurd.
Thank you, Ms. Quinn-Davidson. Mr. Constance?
I absolutely can't disagree with that argument that was just made. Fundamentally, it obviates the need for an assembly. At its core, the argument that's being proposed by law at this time. Why would you need an assembly? The mayor can just send his budget forward and then get it because there is no way to expand that budget without the authority of the delegate of the mayor, which is the CFO. The argument was made that it's all based on the credibility of the projection. The credibility of the projection. And yet, the projection was demonstrated to be uncredible when you had an entire year's worth of bed tags calculated based on three quarters of this year, which this was the rebound year, next year is not. Of course, there were some very interesting messages in the veto. I won't spend too much time, but suddenly, there is great concern about matters that have driven all kinds of policy over the last year and a half as the reason why they project that we're going to lose a whole quarter of funds from next year's budget receipts from alcohol tax. To me, the question of credibility is definitely on the table.
Ms. Ennis?
Through the chair. It was mentioned that by this position, we are obviating the authority of the Assembly. By your position, you're obviating the need for CFO, finance department and treasurer. And this is a checks and balance thing. From the Department of Law, this was not a global statement, really trying to get to the truth. So, almost many of the arguments today go both directions.
Yeah, and I thought it did, I mean.
Go ahead, Mr. Greg.
You know, I'll tell you that the entire OMB and many of those in the financial department helped law on this. And I can assure you, impugning the motive of those workers, it just feels wrong for me tonight. And I can assure the Assembly that we were not working in the direction of anyone in the administration.
I'm not done.
Oh, sorry.
I still have the floor.
Okay, Mr. Constance.
The, all of the good people working in the finance department, as we have learned, as every other department under this administration, are all subject to termination without notice or low cause at many levels of the operation unless they're in the bargaining units in which they get some protection. And so, I do not impugn the motives of the hardworking people of those departments. I just ask, how can we be basing our projections on math that is not based in what I would say is reality? The reality is, we're not going to capture a whole quarter's less of revenue than we did this year. This year was connected to the pandemic. And I do look forward, because I understand, Mr. Bowman, you suggested you're proposing a process, that we see a draft ordinance that addresses this process that you're proposing so that I can have a sense of what process it is you're talking about. Because we cannot exist in an environment where we are waiting for goodwill and good faith to get things done anymore because things need to be encoded for them to be affected.
Thank you, Mr. Constance. We'll go next to Ms. Kennedy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me okay? Not too loud, not too garbled?
We can hear you.
Okay, great, thank you. First of all, let me say that I think it has been wonderful to listen to all the attorneys. I think this is one of the best kind of courtroom situations I think I've ever listened to. So, believe me, I love the bantering back and forth and all the justification. So, I appreciate all of the attorneys in the room that are working on it. But what I really want to talk about though, is this issue of credibility, if you will. I definitely voted to approve the budget even though it was amended in ways that I had misgivings about. But I knew that the mayor, certainly the CFO, the administration would have the ability to kind of work through how some of the amendments would actually impact the budget. One of the things that I've never really brought up when we were talking about the amendments to the budget was the funding source that we've all been referencing and that's the room tax. And even though there was, you can say that we have seen an increase in that this year, the one thing was not, actually several things were not taken into account during that conversation, were all the things in the revenue sources this past year that have not reached their projections. And, you know, I had just gone back to the November 18 summary highlights of the Assembly Budget and Finance Committee meeting that the treasurer brought forth in regard to where we were at with all of our revenue. And yes, you can say that the room tax was exceeding expectation. But if you also look through all of those sources that are listed, there are variances that bring negative numbers. One of the biggest ones was the earnings revenues of the cash pool, $3 million off. Personal property tax, $2.5 million in the negative. So, I felt it was a little disingenuous to say that we've made more money, therefore, we should be able to use that money and project that kind of revenue for the following year when none of the conversations took into account all of the sources that we did not meet our expected revenues for. So, that was, it's kind of in a nutshell, was I think to a certain extent, we might be arguing over whether or not, you know, who has the final say though in all this? Because to me, that's kind of what I think is coming down to is who's right? Who gets the last word in this question? But my biggest concern is just the basis of the numbers, the basis of that $2.5 million. It's really not as credible if you don't also consider all of this negative in those projections of revenue. And if you look at the, like I said, the last summary highlights dated on November 18th of the revenue, it really projects a $1.5 million deficit, give or take $500,000. So, we could be looking at a $200,000, so that's $2 million deficit in what we think looked good in terms of having more money in one area. We really weren't accounting for what was not looking so good in other areas. And for me, that's what it all comes down to, is the actual numbers. So, Madam Chair, I just would hope that if we really do start to look at each of these line items, we will remember that even though it's great to think we have some projections that are better, we also have projections that are in the negatives. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. So, I'm going back through the queue and trying to make sure that people who, everyone has spoken, except one member, and some people have put themselves in the queue for a third go around. So, I'm going to go Ms. Zelletto for a second time, Ms. Quinn-Davidson next for a second time, then Mr. Weddleton and then Mr. Dunbar.
You have two minutes. Everyone have been on debate on the side of the floor now.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Could I get a motion to extend debate? Please do extend debate by 20? Until 5:30? Motion to extend debate has been made to extend it until 5:30 and seconded. Any opposition? Seeing and hearing none, debate has been extended until 5:30. Ms. Zelletto?
Thank you. Because the Mobile Crisis Team amendment keeps coming up as some example by which this will make the Department of Law's argument is predicated. I brought up the prior amendment and this is actually, was perhaps an inarable amendment, frankly. So, it is different and I think it was an anomalous situation. We brought forward the amendment, but the way we specified the revenue were grant funds and the alcohol tax allocation to any programs have been delayed for implementation due to RFPs not having been issued with an implementation date for those funds of October 1st. What happened was, there wasn't enough of a delay. The funds weren't available come October 1 because the RFPs had been issued. That's a little bit of a difference here. So, in April, we thought there would be that funding because the alcohol tax was just rolling out so slowly, okay? And now, in October, the funds weren't available. It wasn't due to a lack of a fund certification, the funds weren't available. In fact, the administration probably should have come back to us and said, hey, the funds aren't available, instead of learning about it kind of after the fact. So, I think relying on that isn't correct. What we did is we made it a contingent amendment. Should the funds be available, we want to do this because it was that way. I don't know that that was the intent of the sponsors at the time, but in reading it, it is what the practical effect gives. That is not what is happening here. So, I don't think that is an appropriate example to be using. So, I just wanted to point that out because I think that context is important since it's highlighted in the memorandum and a good lesson for members in bringing budget amendments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zelletto. Ms. Quinn-Davidson?
Madam Chair, I'd like to amend my motion if I can. So, I would amend it to strike or to override all of the strikes included in the memo from the mayor on the vetoes of AO 2021-96 except the strike of revenue source line 2 at the bottom of page 2 for the municipal manager, definitely municipal manager position. And with one other change, with respect to strike 3, striking line 3 at the bottom of page 3 for amendment 2 for the training for the Whittier Police Department. There was a scrivener's error in that original underlying amendment that Mr. Weddleton prepared. If that information, can you refer to the page number in the packet?
Yeah, exactly.
That would be much more helpful. I don't have that. Oh, it's in this packet here, I'm sorry. Okay. You want me to start over?
No, I think, I got the municipal manager one, but you can move to the next one. That was helpful for Whittier.
Okay. And then, so beyond the municipal manager, not moving to override that specific piece, then with the note that, or striking line 3 of amendment number 2 on the bottom of page 10, with respect to Whittier Police Department, there was a scrivener's error in the original amendment that Mr. Whittier and Ms. LeFrance, I think, produced that said that the training was for November 2021. The training is, there was a training then, I understand, but there is going to be a training in November 2022. So, that's what they meant to say. So, that was just a scrivener's error there.
Second. So, moved and seconded and for clarification, Ms. Quinn-Davidson. The motion is to amend your original motion.
Yeah, or I can start over if you'd like. And essentially, I just want to move to override everything included, every strike included in this document except the deputy municipal manager. I think that they made some good points about that, we hear those points. And with the correction to the scrivener's error on the bottom of, I think, page 10.
And just to be clear, you would like to withdraw your original motion?
Sure, yeah, I can either amend it or just make the motion, whatever I see.
We're withdrawing that in the second.
On the second, can I say for the court spend bit? The point on the, on Whittier, was that to pull it out or change it somewhere? Or not override that veto, is that right?
We are over, I would like to move to override that veto. But with a note that I think that the administration vetoed it because they thought it was for 2021. And so, there was, actually, it wasn't in the omnibus amendment that we brought, it didn't have a date. But in Mr. Weddleton and Ms. LeFrance's original amendment, it said 2021 and that was an error. So, we just want to fix that. And Amy's nodding her head, I think she knows what I'm saying.
Thank you, Ms. Quinn-Davidson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to back up what Ms. Quinn-Davidson had said, that veto was specifically because OMB advised us, you can't use 2022 funds for 2021 services. The way the amendment was presented, we were told they were 2021 training and you can't use 2022 funds for 2021 training.
Thank you, Ms. Nabaski. So, just to state one more time, the original motion has been withdrawn by the mover and the seconded, seconded replaced with a motion by Ms. Quinn-Davidson to approve, to override all the vetoes of 2021-96 except on the bottom of page 9, the revenue source line 2 for municipal manager. And then, to correct on the bottom of line, at page 10, the date for the training to be November 2022 as a scrivener's error. Is that correct?
Yes. And if I can speak just briefly to, I think, appreciate the administration lagging both of those because they're right. In this meeting, we are not In this meeting, we are not able to make additional amendments or changes, so we can't correct the fact that we're not, I'm not intending to override that veto. So what we would do to ensure that the numbers are perfect in the budget is bring something else soon, probably at our next meeting, to address that. We would have done it today, but we just can't, because it's not known as for them.
Thank you, Ms. Quinn Davidson. And Ms. Zelletal, you seconded, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair, so the, the motion is going to be to override all of the vetoes, with one exception, and the other one will just be clerk's note, is that right? There's nothing to override?
Yep.
Okay.
Does that work? Okay. Okay, so I have two members in the queue that put themselves in the queue prior to the revised motion. I'll just ask, Mr. Whittleton, do you want to speak to this motion?
Well, yeah. So we do it all at once here, one by one. There's a number of vetoes in here that I think are, probably will reason and correct that we should not, that they probably can't practically be sustained. But I think if we have a commitment that we override, and we get a budget showing with the amendments, and sometime soon, if we can, I mean, I talked to Dee briefly, she said it'd be best to do it this year, we just meet till it's done, to look at it, and I would think come up with some reason that represents somehow that $1 million for this firefighter, and also maybe correct some of the allocations in here. An example would be AEDC, which I think we should fully fund at 254, but I'm sensitive in fact that we put it in utilities, and that could affect use in MISA to, I'm not clear on how much, but I presume the amount that was not, that was vetoes from this amount, and see the impact of that, and then say, okay, now we need to figure out how to really find that. Looking at this, Dabowski, is this a realistic process?
Through the chair, Mr. Whittleton. I don't know that it's realistic to give you a new budget by the 21st, but I did confirm with OMB, who are waiting here, and we do want to prepare the AMEA contract potentially coming early, certainly in January. We're still in negotiations actively with that union. So, I mean, this, we may have something we could modify, you know, late January, early February, if you want to combine the both, that might be an option.
Okay, and I wouldn't say the 21st, we have 31 days. 21st is not...
About the holidays, John.
I'm a retailer, we don't do those.
Thank you, Mr. Whittleton.
Okay, thanks.
Next is Mr. Dunbar, and then Ms. Quinn Davidson. Did you want to speak on this amendment?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I had some other stuff about why OMB and CFO actually still have a job, either under our interpretation, but I think we'll move past those kind of philosophical debates and talk about practically with this. First of all, of course, I urge my colleagues to support the override. I'll say that we're going to have a conforming amendment most likely anyway, because the reorganization, I believe it will be amended, and so there will be some shifting of personnel. I have a commitment here that the $200,000 at least that is no longer accounted for in our omnibus amendment, I think, I know where I would take that from, and I might move an amendment to that effect in the coming weeks or months. But I'll say, I don't think that January 1 is really the cutoff, because budgets are constantly changing, and this is almost exactly what first quarter budgets were used for. So I, I think that we should move with all deliberate speed, Mr. Whittleton, but I, I don't think that, you know, I don't think we have to have everything resolved by January 1 for this to have the force of law, I just, I disagree with that.
Thank you, Mr. Dunbar.
Ms. Quinn Davidson? Thanks, I was basically going to say what Flor said, except for to add that I appreciate Amy bringing up AMEA. I think that IAFF is something we have to deal with, and we all support public safety, right? We all believe in that contract, it was passed unanimously, you all negotiated it. So I think we can work collaboratively to try to figure that out, and figure out AMEA, whether that's at the same time or a different time that figuring out this $200,000, we can, we can think about that and sort it out. The other piece is that we're, we're probably going to get around $52 million from ARPA funds in April or May. So there is going to be some room to evaluate how that could be used to bolster public safety or other services that we provide.
Thank you, Ms. Quinn Davidson. Ms. Zelletal?
Thank you. So along those lines, I think one thing to remember about our budget is that it can be, appropriations can be made and changed at almost any time, there's no time limitation specifically in the way we business. As I like to think of the budget, it's fluid and dynamic, just as anything the last year, almost two years this taught us, is that the situation is fluid and dynamic. There are some things that continue year over year. What's presented if this veto override passes is basically a continuation budget that realizes that the situation remains fluid and dynamic, and there's always continuous work to do. But I think that that's the appropriate way in which to move forward, and I think it's, based on what we've heard after the budget amendment process, it's the will of our constituents, it's the will of my constituents, that we basically continue with a 2021 continuation budget into 2022, and because that has weathered us pretty darn well through COVID, which was a very challenging time, and that things that are in that budget reflect the priorities of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zelletal. Mr. Perez for Dea.
Thank you, just a couple of comments. First, I want to urge my, my colleagues to, to support this override. Second, I, I'm walking away from this meeting feeling disturbed, and I'm, I'm having to reconcile with that. I do want to know about this, this idea of addressing what you brought forward, the idea that, that an assembly could pass a budget with full intent, and that not knowing the administration can not certify a funding source and then not spend money in the way that it was directed by an assembly is disturbing to me. And, and so, that is, that certainly, I, I don't believe that that's the intent of how this government is supposed to work. And so I would like to, to learn more about the idea of how to close that loophole. I agree with the balance of power, I think we need to ensure that there is that, that balance. But this was a very strange argument, I must say, and so I'm, I'm still reconciling with that, and we can talk about that more later with that. I urge my colleagues' support so we can move forward with this, this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perez for Dea. Mr. Constance?
Yeah, just, as you said, is your argument that all of these arguments cut both ways very interesting. And it would, in, in past times, I've had strong relationships with members of every department, and I've been able to sort out what the facts are, what the details are, and been able to come to a point on policies through the process, where the individuals working in those departments that do have some form of dual required duties, like reviewing and proposing a budget, this is our budget, their budget, that, that those relationships did exist at one time.
Ms. Allard?
Thank you. I wanted to follow up on what Mr. Constance had said, since he had directed it to you. I was on the flip side, so I will tell you, I didn't have any relationships with any of the department heads in the prior administration, because frankly, when I tried to reach out, I was stonewalled, and Ms. Kennedy was too. And anytime that we wanted to speak to anybody, it was either shot down, our emails were returned, and I find it refreshing that I can reach out to the muni manager and to department heads and get a little more guidance and information on what's going on in the administration, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allard. Can I get a motion to extend?
Some room.
10 minutes? 10 minutes until?
Second.
By 40?
Actually, you know what, we have two more items to go through, so I'm just going to say until 6 o'clock. Second.
The motion to extend until 6 PM has been moved by Mr. Constance and enthusiastically seconded by Mr. Dunbar. Any opposition? Seeing none, we are extended until 6 PM. Seeing no other members in the queue, members may proceed to vote on the motion to override the mayoral veto of AO 2021-96, with the exception of revenue source line 2, $196,000, or $196,57, $196,057 municipal manager, move costs for Director of Enterprise Services position to utilities and enterprises, and then also to correct strike line 3 on the bottom of page 10 to change the date to November 2022.
I don't think we can do that. I think it was a clerk's note, it's not attached to the change.
Right, thank you, Mr. Constance. Yes, to include a clerk's note to change the date, thank you for that. Madam Clerk, otherwise, is that the correct motion? Okay, everybody's clear on the motion? Madam Clerk, would you conduct the vote, please?
Mr. Whittleton?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
No.
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
No.
Ms. LaFrance?
Yes.
Mr. Constance?
Yes.
Ms. Zelletal?
Yes.
Mr. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. Perez for Dea?
Yes.
Ms. Quinn Davidson?
Yes.
Madam Chair, the amendment motion to override the veto passes now.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next, we have item 4B, Assembly action on mayoral veto of AO 2021-97. As amended, an ordinance adopting the 2022 General Government Capital Improvement Budget from the regular assembly meeting of November 23, 2021. What is the will of the body?
Can override?
Second. The motion to override is made by Mr. Dunbar and seconded by Ms. Quinn Davidson. Mr. Dunbar?
I, I think there is very, there's much less legal issue with this one discussion, it's a policy choice. I believe that these are worthy things that should go on the bond. I would, mayor disagrees.
Thank you, Mr. Dunbar. Mr. Bowman?
Through the chair, just to clarify, there is no certification record with the, with potential override of vetoes in AO 2021-97.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman.
You said issue, right, Mr. Bowman?
The problems with, which we have discussed regarding 2021-96 do not exist in 2021-96. And, and it's not timely, but I've confirmed with the CFO's office that they also do not exist in 21, 2021-98.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. I'm just pausing to allow for members to get in the queue. Seeing no members in the queue, members may proceed to vote on the motion to override the mayoral veto of AO 2021-97. Madam Clerk, would you conduct the vote, please?
Yes. Mr. Whittleton?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
No.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
No.
Ms. LaFrance?
Yes.
Mr. Constance?
Yes.
Ms. Zelletal?
Yes.
Mr. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. Perez for Dea?
Yes.
Ms. Quinn Davidson?
Yes.
Madam Chair, the motion to override the mayoral veto of AO 2021-97 passes now.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next, we have item 4C, Assembly action on mayoral veto of AO 2021-98. As amended, an ordinance adopting and appropriating funds for the 2022 Municipal Utilities Enterprise Activities operating budgets, and the 2022 Municipal Utilities Enterprise Activities capital improvement budgets from the regular assembly meeting of November 23, 2021. What is the will of the body?
I move to override the veto of item, of AO 2021-98, with the exceptions of, on page 2022, amendment 3 related to AEDC, amendment 4 related to the Director of Enterprise Services position.
Thank you. A motion has been made to override the mayoral vetoes of AO 2021-98, with the exception of two items on page 22, first amendment number 3, and then amendment number 4, moved by Mr. Dunbar and seconded by Ms. Quinn Davidson. Mr. Dunbar?
Thank you, Madam Chair. But my, my intent with amendment 4 is to be just conforming with what we did on the first amendment here. We misjudged where those funds were coming from, so the intent is to leave that Director of Enterprise Services position unchanged in the budget.
For amendment 4?
I'm sorry, I meant for amendment 4. With regard to the AEDC, I would defer to my colleagues.
Mr. Whittleton? Mr. Whittleton?
Yeah, regarding that, you know, I, as I said, you know, I think AEDC should be fully funded in the 254 that we've done the last few years, and this does not do that. The mayor's left it in 114. I would, as we look at the budget in the future, is try to find some other ways to do it, because I do accept that there would be impact on the use in MISA we didn't account for this. That's actually 140, 140. We know that.
You got it, first chance.
I have a list, yeah.
Thank you.
We'll watch it now, oh, good, well, it's even better. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Whittleton. Ms. Zelletal?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Question of Mr. Whittleton is, have we talked to AEDC, and if there is time lag in the $114,000, like the case doesn't happen until first quarter, are there any operational considerations for them?
At their meeting on Wednesday morning, I did not see that there would be, and I would hope that we get something, because the other issues we talked about somewhat before.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Zelletal. Ms. Allard?
Thank you. I just wanted to talk, or speak up in reference to the AEDC. I've actually reached out and asked them, what have they actually done to physically help the community in any way besides like slideshows, and they can never came back to me with an answer. Feels like a bunch of people that sit around and talk and have lunch on the muni all the So I just don't agree with it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Are there any other members who should get in the queue? Mr. Constance?
My favorite project that they put forward this year was the ANC Pass program, which is an emerging shipping program that allows shippers who are having cargo issues to land planes here, that they're already landing here, that they fuel, bring in cargo from China to the lower 48, and put it on cargo container ships that leave anchorage empty, and actually work to move goods back into the flow that have been locked down in the LA harbors that you have thousands of shit stocked up. And so that program, to me, is worth every penny, because that has a long-term value to the municipality, it creates a third way for goods to get from the manufacturers to the markets, and we are at the nexus of it.
Madam Chair, to me? All of them. Yes, go ahead, Ms. Allard.
They didn't facilitate all that out of their own, that came from other industries and stuff, too.
No, absolutely, I agree, the shippers, the university airport, and AEDC.
Right, so when I say that, I'm saying that even if they weren't there, that would have still happened. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Allard, thank you, Mr. Constance. Seeing no other members in the queue, members may proceed to vote on the motion to override the vetoes of AO 2021-98, with the exception of amendment number 3 and amendment number 4. Madam Clerk, would you, would you conduct the vote, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. Mr. Whittleton?
No.
Ms. Allen?
No.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
No.
Ms. LaFrance?
Yes.
Mr. Constance?
I need a minute.
Ms. Quinn Davidson, did you call in?
Ms. Jones, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
This is Ms. Quinn Davidson, I just wanted to let you know I'm on the line, ready to vote.
Okay, thank you.
I vote yes. Mr. Constance?
Ms. Allatell?
Yes.
Mr. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. Frisfordia?
Yes.
Ms. Quinn Davidson?
Yes.
Madam Chair, the motion to override the mayoral veto on AO 2021-98 passes eight three.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next, we have audience participation. Are there members of the public who wish to participate? If so, please come forward. And you will have three minutes.
Where would you like me to stand, Madam Chair?
That's good, right there. I'm going to go ahead and set the timer for three minutes, and then I'll wave my hand, or I'll say when you have 30 seconds left.
Cool.
So if you state your name for the record, and your community council, or area of the municipality in which you live, you will have three minutes. Welcome.
Niall Sherwood Williams, Planet Earth, Alaska, Anchorage, Spinnard area, God's Land. So speaking to this, it's great to see government battle back and forth. Government should be slow, not changing a lot. When it comes to who has authority to spend funds, to tax, and collect those revenues, here's the original municipal charter. It was actually written back in August 31 of 1959, original municipal charter. So I know all of it's not still valid, but the intent of our framers of the municipality, of the corporation, it's laid out right here. So, the withdrawal of funds, section 6.5, all funds withdrawn from the treasury shall be drawn pursuant to the authority and appropriation of the council. So it's not the assembly, it's the council. Taxation, by ordinance 7.1, the council shall provide in the code for the annual assessment, levy, and collection of city taxes. But here's an interesting little part. 8.3, expenditures before funds for improvement are available. Says no expenditures other than for the administration, engineering, and legal work for any local improvement, the cost of which is to be borne by special assessment on the property benefited, shall be made unless the cash is on hand, or bonds have been authorized to finance the costs they're up. So you can't spend before you have the money in your pocket. So that's the CFO's job, through the chair of Mr. Fris, is to spank you on your bottom when you're spending money you don't have. It also talks about, I believe it's in 11, section 11, talks about borrowing money, and limitations on borrowing money. And it states in 11.2 that the total amount of outstanding obligation and indebtedness for all public purposes shall not at any time exceed 15% of the assessed value on all real and personal property in the city. So, you have a legal and a fiduciary responsibility through the chair of Mr. Fris to maintain the public's funds, and to make sure you don't spend money we don't have. I don't want to see our city federalized by the Department of Homeland Security National Police Force, so please stop bankrupting the city. I do appreciate the infighting.
30 seconds.
Continue to do it. When it comes to the separation of powers, this is a very important and fundamental argument of local government. Continue to have these battles, take yourself to federal court, Fitzgerald's right over there, they'll file a lawsuit, you know, let's work it out. Let's decide who has really the authorities here. Let's figure it out. But be responsible to your shareholders. Mr. Constance, nice idea, we need to work on the supply chains through the chair. I want to see this city be a billion-dollar city, let's go. In Jesus' name.
Thank you for your participation. Are there any other members of the public here who wish to participate? If so, please come forward. Seeing and hearing no one, we will move on to assembly comments, and we will start with the members on the phone. Ms. Kennedy? Any comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair, no further comments, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Mr. Rivera?
Thank you, Madam Chair, no comment.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Ms. Quinn Davidson?
No comment, happy weekend to everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Quinn Davidson. Ms. Allard?
No comment, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allard. Mr. Peterson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, no comment.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Mr. Weddleton?
Do you have a comment? You know, on Tuesday, we had a resolution about acknowledging, you know, victims of homicide on survivors and victims for justice and what they do, and three days later, picture of a girl was just senselessly shot, not a mile away, and as we're sitting here, they're having a memorial for it, and of course, and I went briefly, too, before we came here. It was absolutely beautiful. I just, it is just, I don't know what to say, you know, but just shopping, and I just pray for them.
Thank you, Mr. Weddleton. Ms. Allatell?
No comment, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Allatell. Mr. Dunbar?
With apologies to my colleagues, I do have a comment regarding the budget process we just went through. And again, I have to go back to the comment about the CFO or the budget team not having a role with the action we just took, and I just fundamentally disagree with that. We do value those, that staff and the work they do very, very highly, and there's at least three distinct roles that I see. One was laid out by Mr. Falzey, it's first binding on the mayor in the first instance of the budget being submitted. Second, it is clearly advisory to the assembly, and the smart assembly will take it into account. And indeed, with all this conflict we've had, we took about $550 million budget, and it changed by about $3 million, you know, about half of 1%. The vast majority of that work stands totally intact. And then the last thing, of course, is ministerial. We rely on that staff to actually expend the funds throughout the next year. There are going to be a lot of contracts, and a lot of other kinds of expenditures, and we completely rely on work of the assembly, and, I'm sorry, of the administration of staffers. So I don't want those staff at all to feel like they aren't valued by this, by this assembly. Your, your work is very much appreciated, especially. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Dunbar. Mr. Constance?
So I'm going to do my comments in two parts. The chair has shared with me an argument that I made a salacious comment, computing this administration by suggesting that people are being fired, or feeling threatened leaving the municipality, and those jobs that are not in a bargaining unit and protected. All I can say is I have fielded so many calls from people in exactly that position, that if administration is not yet tuned in to the fact that that's the perception of the working executives of this municipality, then I'm sorry for the cold awakening to the fact, but those comments are coming to me so frequently that it's hurting. I get those calls wherever I am. And I'm sad, because there's more coming, and there's nothing I can do about it as a legislator in this municipality. All I can do is comfort them, and tell them, do the best you can, keep your head down, be invisible if you can, and keep doing the good work that you're doing for this city. Don't leave, we need you, because I'm afraid of what happens when everybody goes. So for my part, it just causes me pain. Now I'm going to switch gears. I'm not going to be here on the 21st, maybe on the 21st. And so I'm going to take a public opportunity to say to Dee and us, thank you for a lifetime of service to this municipality, in giving your all, and sometimes being profoundly disagreed with by members of this body, and standing there and being part of the robust conversation that is how this municipality goes forward. So you have given so much to this city, I just honor you, and that's what I want to say before we're done. There will be this time, next meeting for them. Otherwise, I'll just say Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays.
Thank you, Mr. Constance. And thank you all for being here today, and especially thank you to the Department of Law, and the Assembly Council, Mr. Falzey, and have, have a nice weekend. We're at the end of our agenda. I will entertain a motion to adjourn, so.
Second.
We are adjourned.
We did this, we are.
That's.
It's true. It's true.